Meeting to order, it is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Springfield Township. As usual, we begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance and ask everybody in attendance to join us. I pledge allegiance to the by of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Price, will you call the roll?
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Spickard and Mr. DeLoro arrived late.
Mr. DeLoro is in route, but he instructed me to go ahead. He had a meeting in Columbus which detained him.
Okay.
And so we're going to proceed, but Mr. Spickard?
Here.
Okay.
Okay, first of all, I'm going to move that we dispense with the reading of minutes and approve the minutes to date.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes. Next, I move to approve payment of bills and payroll as prepared by the fiscal officers subject to audit.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes. Next, I move to accept the letter of resignation from Terry Robinson, effective April 4, 2023. Mr. Robinson had been in assistance in a number of jobs here, and we want to thank him for the years of service that he gave us, but I move to accept the resignation.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes. Next, I move to approve the annual appropriations for 2023 pursuant to the attached listing, pursuant to Rev. Code 5705.38C regarding budgetary control appropriation measures shall be classified so as to set forth separately the amounts appropriated for each department. Our legal level of control is set as personal services and other as to each fund. The fiscal officer will certify this and forward a copy of the annual appropriations to the Summit County Budget Commission by April 1, 2023. And that particular outline of fund lines and broken out for those categories will be attached to the minutes of this meeting and available through the fiscal officer's office.
Yes.
I move its adoption.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes. Next, I move to approve a proposal from Environmental Design Group, which is dated February 24, 2023, in the amount of $4,900 for survey services to determine certain boundary lines of township property known as the Orndorf Nature Preserve and the Lake Moore Main Street Rightaway. Details of the services will be set forth in the proposal attached to the minutes of this meeting. The payment provided for will be paid from Sun Fund Line 1,000-610-730.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Yes. Are you all right? Next, I move to approve a second proposal from Environmental Design Group dated March 1, 2023, in the amount of $13,480 to assess the feasibility and development of the probable costs in preparation of a trail alignment map for the extension of the Spartan Trail from its east most point, its most east point on the lakefront to the point it presently exists at the Kenny Ray Boulevard in Lake Moore. The payment of $13,480 would be paid from Fund Line 1,000-610-730. Detail of the services as set forth in the proposal is to be attached to the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes. Next, I move to approve a proposal for consultant services from Natural Heritage LLC to assist in the development of the Spartan Trail, including assistance in developing fund grant, in developing grant funding for the trail construction. Services based upon an hourly rate of $55 per hour and an amount not to exceed $8,500 without further approval of this board. Detail of services as set forth in the proposal is to be attached to the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes. Next, I move to approve payment to Otarma, which is our liability and property coverage insurance company, in the amount, in the total amount of $132,534. This is the 2023 annual premium for all insurance issues for Springfield Township. And as I indicated, as I read it, it's for liability for all of the departments and employees of the township, as well as the buildings, property, vehicles. The payment to be split among the departments and to be paid from this kind of allocation, Fund Line 1,000-110-380, in the amount of $35,752.95. That's the general fund. Then from Fund Line 2031-330-380, in the amount of $21,027.19. I believe that's the road department.
That's correct.
From Fund Line 2,081-210-380, in the amount of $36,896.79. That would be the fire department.
That should be the police.
Oh, it's the police. That's the police fund line. And then Fund Line 2191-230-380, which is the fire department fund line, in the amount of $38,857.07. That's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes. Mrs. Chapman, do you have some matters?
I move to approve the purchase of two Motorola radios for the dispatch center from Motorola Solutions at a cost of $8,252.14, paid from Fund Line 2281-760-790.
I would second that.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
I move to approve the probation extension for part-time officer Steven Severon to September 7, 2023.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
I move to approve the purchase of 10 tasers with four-year extended warranties in the amount of $16,716.20 from Axon Enterprises Incorporated, paid from Fund Line 2221-210-430.
I would second that.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
That was a grant, correct? That one?
No, the tasers, we recommend purchasing tasers from the drug forfeiture funds.
Oh, gotcha, sorry. Confused. I move to approve the purchase of three MDTs in the amount of $16,251.69 from Gov. Connections Incorporated, and paid from Fund Line 2081-210-430-0931. Funding was received from Edward Barnes Memorial Justice Assistance Grant 2022.
I would second that.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes. Now, that's 100% funded by the government.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the purchase of body worn camera software and equipment in the amount of $30,081.18, paid from Fund Line 2081-210-430-0931, and $3,303.63, paid from Fund Line 2221-210-430, for nine-camera licenses, for a total of $3,384.81, from WatchGuard Motorola. Funding for the body worn camera software and equipment was received from the Office of Criminal Justice Survey Services Body Worn Camera Grant Program.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes. I would move to approve the sales order from Southeastern Equipment Company in the amount not to exceed $335,000, and paid from Fund Line 2274-760-790, for the purchase of a 2022 Grado D172 hydraulic excavator. Mr. Weinheimer, it's not usual that we purchase equipment that has a lifetime of 30 years.
Not too often.
When it, how old is the one that?
The current one has turned 30 this year.
Okay, and?
We anticipate a 25 to 30-year life expectancy out of this one as well.
Okay, and the one that exists now, we've had difficulty getting replacement parts?
That's one of the problems, is that some of the parts that we need are obsolete. We're fortunate, we have a mechanic that's been able to take parts apart and build new parts.
Okay.
So there's going to be a day, something's going to break, and we won't have it at all, so it's time.
Just for the benefit of people that are, that may listen to our meetings, you know, can you describe how essential that equipment is?
That's probably the number one used equipment in our department between, we use that out on the road for ditching, for replacing culverts, pipelines, crossover pipes in the road. It is the probably most used piece of equipment we have, separate from plow and snow.
Okay, and what we do have is at the end of its useful life.
That is correct.
If approving this order, how quickly are we able to obtain?
This one, we were fortunate enough that we caught one that they had in stock. The company tries to keep them in stock, so we're probably going to get this in the next two weeks.
Okay. Okay, that's my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes. Before, our last item is an executive session dealing with personnel matters. If there's anybody here that has any questions, wants to address us, we are present. Mr. Dees, before you, yeah, no, before you come up, because there are a couple of things to give you. I know that we have citizens interested in our work on the concern over the water quality of Springfield Lake, and I did want to report on a couple developments.
Agree.
First of all, it's come to my attention that the city of Akron has made application through the assistance of Environmental Design Group for a grant to prepare the nine-element NICSes.
What?
It is a nine-element NICSes, they call it NICSes, maybe, am I mispronouncing it? Okay.
You're saying the right.
It's a water study, they call it, they call it the Wingfield, Wingfoot Lake watershed to include Springfield Lake. It's a nine-element plan to take a look at all of the outfalls, point and non-point sources that drain in and that exist in the watershed. My understanding is that they've made application. It's something that when we met with Mr. Brubaker, and looking at what kind of efforts could be made in order to determine what has to be done in the, in the long term to protect the lake and to improve the water quality, the beginning, it was very important to do what they call a nine-element plan that would talk about what needs to be done to protect the lake. And the development of the nine, the so-called nine-element plan is a predicate to obtaining grant funding. So I found that information which I was just appraised of, fortunately, things that the city of Akron is concerned about includes us in the watershed. The second thing that, that has come to my attention is that Mr. Brubaker's office, the county engineer's office, is submitting, is requesting proposals for a study to be done of preliminary watershed study to identify upland areas within the Springfield Lake watershed that are suitable for water quality basins and other practices. M, if you've heard the expression BMPs, best management practices that will reduce pollutants and peak flows in stormwater runoff flowing to Springfield Lake. After approval of the preliminary study and concept plans, the consultant will refine the study and prepare preliminary plans of water quality basins and other best management practices. The study will consist of verification of the watershed area, concept pan with approximate location, size and volume of basins and structures, preliminary plans, hydrologic and hydraulic analysis and cost estimates, and other improvements as recommended by the consultant, which, to put it in more simple terms, it is the first step in the development of green infrastructure, which when we met with the county engineer and discussed the overall proposal that had been made for the, the spending money for the benefit of Springfield Lake, it was our request that one of the important things to do would be to look at green infrastructure to reduce the flow of contaminants into the lake. And this is a first step toward being specific about what should be done. They are planning, the consultant selection, I understand is CT consultants, and the contract to proceed will, will be any day now. They had estimated the time to proceed on the consultation would actually be January of this year. I just spoke with the county engineer's office, and they're ready to sign an agreement. The other action that through another, I'm trying to think of the company, if you remember, is it DLZ?
DLZ, I don't know what that stands for.
They are ready now to enter a, an agreement to have DLZ prepare the plan necessary. I'm going to read to you exactly, it involves the Springfield Lake outlet.
Yes, look, I don't remember.
The consultant will prepare a study and preliminary plans for Springfield Lake outlet channel shown on an attachment to their scope of work. The study will consist of verification of the watershed area, determination of the lake discharge, preliminary plans, hydraulic and hydrologic analysis, cost estimates, and other improvements as recommended by the consultant. The proposed channel improvements will be designed to provide adequate capacity, eliminate bank erosion, remove encroachments, and provide maintenance access and easements as required. Whether that part of the project, I've always had question what, how that would relate to water quality, but I'm not the engineer. That's my report.
David Dees.
Yes, sir.
1184 West Parkway. That's excellent, that's an excellent report, thank you very much. I think the, the first thing I want to talk about is the timeline that's been going on on a particular report as such as this. We have had reports before as a community on these type of reports. I will take you back to 2001. There was a thing called JED, okay? Joint Economic Development, as you know of very well. They have an area squared off that's around the lake. This has come right off of Springfield's website, and it says, "Areas programmed to be sewers within the next 20 years." That was in 2001 that they proposed this, okay? It says, "Proposed in 2021 draft map proposed by Summit County Department of Environmental Services." In other words, Summit County was proposing this also.
What are you reading from?
I'm reading this right from your website, okay? I've given you this before, this is not new, all right? But what I am, what I'm saying is, is this, these type of studies, and this is great news, it took us four years to get to this kind of a study for Summit County to do something. Whether it was my last email to the EPA or not that triggered this, I don't know, but I don't care. All I care about is the lake. That's one of our, probably Springfield's biggest asset besides that trail that's going to be extended.
Biggest natural asset.
Biggest natural asset, that's correct. If it was drained and everything, I don't think you'd see the, you know, the car shows and all the stuff that goes on there. So this study that's coming through Summit County again might be a good thing, but what I beg of you is that you stay on it, that somebody from the township, somebody from Joe Dean Kelly, take the ball by the horn and say, "Okay, I'm going to stay on this, I'm going to make them do something to help our lake." You know, I've been begging this for four years since the red signs came up, okay? That's, that's one thing that I have, you know, that's.
And believe me, I look forward to the day that you don't have to come over here and remind us.
I understand it, and I agree.
And that's not personal.
I understand.
That has to do with, that we get to, we get to the point where we can say.
When I come here, I'm going to see that Grado out there, and it's going to be making that retention pond out there, you know, that would, that would be the serious deal. We've had funding already, you know, you talk about they're going to get grant money and all this other stuff. We have funding for this. You have engineering for this. We have not moved forward.
I don't know if we've received that final engineer.
We're waiting on the bids right now. It's in, right, it's days from us receiving the bid, so we can put it out the bid.
Four years I've been standing here, you know.
I can only tell you where we're at.
All right. Also, I asked, before I get to the money part.
Okay, where, the, let me, let me see that. I didn't remember, and, and JED was long before I got on the board. The, the, the page that you're referring to.
It's a hard read.
Where, where did you pick up the language relative to the, the?
This red line, if you look here, see this red, whatever that's, joint, that JED, you're going to, you're going to sew it along that red line. If you look, that red line goes from Lake Moore all the way around by my house, all the way around, and over here, where they already have sewer.
Okay.
Okay? You can have it.
Okay, thank you.
I got that from your site, from our site, I should say our site.
Oh, yeah.
What I, if we could, if we could also have, now that they have, that Summit County is saying, "Okay, we're going to do this study for water and everything," if we could have a kind of a timeline that, or an agenda, you know, you make an agenda every, every meeting for, for this, you know, it isn't really that hard, maybe we can make an agenda, and if it doesn't get followed, you know, at least we have a plan of attack, you know, this, this is what we're going to do, this is the agenda we're going to do, and we're going to try to eventually get retention ponds, eventually get, you know, sewer systems, you know, and I, I know that's, you know, in a lot of people's mind a bad word, but it's the only way you're going to clean up that lake.
Yeah, I agree with you.
You know, I mean.
I do agree with you, and that, that step may not be popular with everybody, but it's really the, it's the long-term.
Last thing I want to do is pay Akron sewer bill, you know, but I don't know how else we're going to get that, these septic systems, you know, they, they come up, Summit County comes out with a $20 or $40, whatever it is, you're going to have your thing inspected and da, 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 and here we go. I've never seen anybody get fixed, I've never seen anything fail, you know, and if you want scientific proof, go out there on Tuesday and look at the suds that come up on the lake. I mean, people just bypass their septic system and go, they don't want to get a pump, they, you know. Okay, that's, that's enough of that. The only other, other thing I had was, is, you know, I was here whenever we were all happy with getting the $780,000 for health. Have we spent any of it to help the water? We have not.
We, we have, we have spent some, and before I get to that, I think what we had said as a board, that in general, we were prepared to spend $360,000 of that money toward the lake. And the, the thing is that I have to step back and say, that's nowhere near what it'll take to guarantee the water quality of Springfield Lake.
Oh, I.
And so when we talked about retention basins over here, I, I have no idea what kind of costs we'd be involved in, but it looks like based preliminarily, they're talking about $250,000.
Okay.
And that really is, in my opinion, really is only a stopgap.
It is.
Because the day would come for, for the solution that you want, and that I think we believe is really the long-term solution. If the long-term solution comes about, we might want to be filling those things back in because they're no longer needed. So if we do that, to be honest about it, it's some of these things, the county, which will have more serious money, and in their proposal, it looks to me as though they have much more serious money that would be allocated to both of the projects that they're asking for proposal on.
Well, as I said when I started, I don't believe anything that you're saying because past proves they do nothing. The JED, the JED agreement that was signed through Summit Development, whatever it is, never, 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 never came to light, it never happened. So they talk about it, and then people die. So they talk about it and then people die, people get re-elected, people get not elected, and it's gone. So we need to stay on it now so that it gets, we actually get physical things working. You said $380,000 as an-
360, I said.
What, I'm sorry?
Three, I said 360.
360, 380, I don't know what you said, but. We got 780, so what you're telling me is, is the rest of that went for bubble gum?
No, it hasn't, it, it's been, I mean, basically, the, the spirit and letter of what it was allocated for was supposed to be permanent improvements.
For health.
Well, no, I, if you read the, if you, if you read the thing-
I was here.
It's, it's, it's very broad. By the time they were done with the regulations, it's basically for about whatever we decide is a government service. Am I, am I stating that incorrectly as it-
We see the revenue loss, and through revenue loss, that allows us to spend that money-
Well, as a taxpayer-
And that can be what we feel is the most important thing that we can spend. After we look-
Well, as a taxpayer, we also pass legislate, levies and everything else for the police, for the fire, for this building, for your insurance that you just approved tonight, for all that. This is extra above and beyond capital that was given to us by the federal government to be used for health things. And if it's not being used for that and you're buying cameras for police, although I'm all for the cameras for the police, and believe me, I'm all for more paramedics, you know, I mean, they, they saved my life, you know, I'm all for that stuff, but I pass levies for that. That money is above and beyond. That's extra to, to come in there for health, not for us to just spend on new uniforms.
None of that went towards-
Well, what I'm saying is that's, I just want to make sure that doesn't happen.
I will tell you, nobody has spent more time on this lake than Dean. He spends every spare minute, he was here most of the day today on the phone, trying, so he is doing everything he can, and I'm trying to help him, that's something I'm still navigating through, but it's not that we don't care, it's just how it-
Oh, I know you don't care. I mean, I know, I know you care, I do, I do. I, I am just saying that I want, I don't want that money to be lost, that's all. I don't want, I want it to be whenever we do say, "Okay, we're going to do the retention pond, oh, bucket's empty, shit, now what?" You know, or we're going to put in a sewer line, oh, got no money. That's all.
To get the long-term fix is going to take more money than we have.
More than the 780,000.
Yeah, and, and let me say this, that, that if the more effective fix, long-term fix, all of the residents in this area are going to be contributing.
Absolutely.
Involuntarily.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is anybody else here to?
I'm sure you guys know why I'm here and talk about the dump.
Well, you are-
I thought they were going to quit dumping there, is what was said. I heard at the January coalition meeting, and they're dumping there.
Yeah, we were dumping, but we, we had to keep dumping.
And you're going to still keep dumping there.
We can't find a new place?
Have you looked?
I have made some phone calls, but I haven't had a lot.
Who, who'd you call this year?
I talked to the county, and they, it's interesting to me, they'll try to find people that are close to their work sites sometimes to be able to dump their properties so they don't have to run so far. So we weren't missing.
Well, generally, what are, what-
We're dumping soil typically as dirt and gravel.
You're talking about dirt and gravel?
Yeah, from our ditch lane and that thing.
I mean, it doesn't make it right.
We did talk about that, I didn't know-
There's going to be a mountain over there one day, I mean, it just keeps getting bigger and bigger. And then you was talking about this watershed, is that a wetland over there? Maybe you ought to stop dumping there now until you do your studies with, with the lake and all your, your watershed you're talking about. I mean, might not be a bad idea to check on that, see what kind of contaminants may be leaching from your dumping over here. I mean, just a thought, but I know you guys are still going to dump there, I mean, I wouldn't tell somebody you're, you're going to quit dumping there, and you, you still do, I mean-
I wasn't aware we still were, maybe we need to, we need to cover this problem at a work session and see, I don't know-
When's the work session? We can have one tomorrow if they want.
Pardon me?
When's the work session? I would like to listen to some of that.
We will be here next Thursday, correct?
Correct.
What, what time could we invite Mr. Hallman in?
Great, well, we, we already got some meetings set up, you know that, but our meeting starts now.
Okay.
So next Thursday at 3:00?
Yes. Do you want to suggest a time, so?
Trying to think who we have already set up to come in. Maybe around 5:00ish?
5:00?
Thursday, a week from today.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Very good.
Oh, one other thing, I don't know what the fire department has for equipment, but prior work, they're having an auction, and the fire department's auctioning off a lot of their, like, jaws of lives and all that hydraulic, because they went all battery.
Which fire department?
It'll be a KICO, it'll be a KICO online auction, Green, City of Green.
Okay.
I don't know what kind of, I'm just, just, just a thought, in case you guys might be interested if you need any of that type of equipment, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
Just a thought. It's on, it's online, it'll be on the KICO auction. I think it starts the 31st, March 31st, goes through like the 5th of April, the auction or the bidding.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Thank you. Anybody else? We do have a personnel matter.
Jack, please.
Oh, oh, that's right.
You have something I want to share with the board.
My apologies.
That's okay. I just wanted to mention that Sergeant Hofus, a retired Springfield Police Officer, passed away on February 22nd. He served as a Springfield Police Officer for 42 years. He started in Springfield in 1978. Sergeant Hofus retired in 2003, and he returned again, and he helped with the property room, handled junk autos, he helped establish the auxiliary program, and then he retired again in 2019. I'm just sorry that I didn't get opportunity to work with Sergeant Hofus, I did meet him several times. I understand that he was a respected mentor and a friend to many of the officers in our department. I know that he was missed by our officers, but he'll be profoundly missed from the Springfield community, so I just wanted to mention that tonight.
I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that for the benefit of people that maybe didn't know, he was a great person, I think, not only as a good officer, but involved in, in concerns about people who are underprivileged. He, he had an active life, I think, outside of the department, concerns with the church and so on. So we enjoyed having him in the years that he was here.
He seemed like a really good man, a few times that I've met him. I know he was very involved in Mayor and Athlete, did a lot of programs with that church, traveling overseas, mentoring folks, so, yeah, he'll be missed by the community, I'm sure.
Okay, anybody else? If not, here is the motion, it's following the law for executive sessions. I move that we adjourn for executive session for purpose of discussing appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of public employee or other terms and conditions of their employment. The session to include the Board of Trustees, its administrative assistant and other department heads are represented as called in by the board. That's my motion.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes. Do we anticipate a motion? Okay, we do not. Okay, thank you all.